Also, this board will not be reselling the property. That proposal will be going to the common council. And there will be a public hearing with the common council on that issue. So you folks did hear quite a few comments tonight. Maybe we can just talk about some of them. One of them that has, well, if you want to address, we have Walden Mills' original comments and she said she had some rebuttals to your answers. So I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Just Jenny for the record, here, staff here. Jill Ariel, Vice President of Real Estate and Home Management.
That's my guy. I can make a good look up. Like, who are you, a lawyer for a company?
Did you get a copy of Mary Ann's? No, she's got a copy. You can just take off the paper.
Yeah, just if Chairman Pla would like me to address, we have a work for the city of the issue of 300 Flatbush connection to the Flatbush Avenue sewer, which has existed for some time with the Almond House. Early on in the process, the city engineer and some residents, some members of the public, I should say, expressed a concern about the Flatbush Avenue sewer. Having worked with the city sewer system myself, often one for about 40 years, and Ralph, I think, 25 years or so, there's a problem, there's limitations to the Flatbush Avenue sewer. We get down by Sheen Court where the hill flattens out and those are the CSX tracks down to Foxville Avenue, it takes 123 to turn that hole. Here is, got a lot of flow coming into it and has bad geometry. I took that concern to Rubco. And they said, can we redirect our flow somewhere? The buildings currently are connected, the existing buildings are all connected to the Flatbush Avenue. We met with Ralph Swenson, spoke with Joe Schneer. One obvious route was to pump our wastewater to a different mini-system of the city. We proposed that. The city engineer thought that was a good idea, much better than going. Our other option was to, well, we had two or three other options. It was to store our wastewater, keep it aerated, and lead it in at night into the sewer off hours, so to speak. Another option was to pump it to a good section of sewer and a good pump station, a totally different route through the city, which was to go to Clifton Avenue, the small diameter force main, size of a normal, like a gas main, to the three-inch pipe. To the first bit of manhole in Clifton that was treated directly to the Lincoln Street Pump Station, which pumps East Chester Street now to Hasbro Avenue, to that system of the city. I gave you room maps last meeting, how different that was than the route that the Flatbush Avenue sewer was. We met at the Lincoln Street Pump Station after the meeting, shortly after last meeting. Alan Luntchel, who's DPW in charge of pump stations, was there. The Lincoln Street Pump Station was a good working order, both pumps worked, controls worked, emergency generator worked. Pump station runs an hour to an hour and a half a day. Pump station is near capacity once in 20 to 22 hours a day. He sets spreadsheets of all the pump run times. We'd be adding, at full design flow, which would only go up to like that, we'd be adding about 15 to 20 minutes of pump run time at that station. So everyone agreed it was best to go to Lincoln Street. Then it became the route. We opened the manholes on April 17th, the flow is all going through lines from Mead Street now to Flank. The city arranged a TV line. Unfortunately, the city camera broke when they went to TV the line, or malfunctioned. They had to send it back to the factory. Factory sent a loader. Last week, the city tried to TV the line with a loader. The loader didn't work. So Rubco paid to have Barold Construction, who has a sewer lining business, a TV rig come in on Friday morning, with permission of the city and under the supervision of Mr. Swenson and Mr. Aiden, in keeping the line from Mead Street down to the Lincoln Street Pump Station. The first section of pipe, actually 208 feet, all of the city records showed it was eight inches, only six inch. And it had numerous defects and issues, although I think it had capacity to take our 30 gallons a minute peak flow without problem. TV the next line down, and it was eight inch, and it was beautiful all the way down from that point down. With, the only issue I saw, I watched a TV film of both manhole runs, and there was just one root intrusion in that line that was clipped out by the sewer jet before, when they did the TV route, which is very time concurrent, and it was clipped right out. So the first section of pipe from Mead Street down was, let's say, fair to poor condition. And the second pipeline down to Lincoln Street Pump Station passed there was in, I'd say, very good, excellent condition. That's eight inch. We stipulated right at the site, Ralph said, I want you to come pass this six-inch line with your connection point. We agreed to that. I think Mr. Swenson, the second manhole, has summarized everything that occurred, and with his recommendation, that we would not be having any impact of the sewer system. And we're actually taking the flow away from Flatbush, which is true, which is, I guess, a bigger problem for the city. Ralph has got a capital project request for down at the bottom of the hill. So we'll be directing all our sewage in the site away from the existing connection, county put, county replaced not too many years ago, and bringing it down to a pump station where the new senior building is. We proposed to pump it to now the manhole pass and then screen, not the manhole at Clifton, the next manhole down the hill, toward Lincoln Street, which I think was identified by Mr. Swenson.
So just to summarize then, you're going to be running a parallel line, purposefully running a parallel line next to the existing line on Clifton. That's the proposal.
A pressure line from our pump station.
Okay.
That would run to what, where the city engineers told us he wants it to connect with.
Between Mead and Lincoln, to tie it to the eight-inch line.
He's calling manhole seven. I mean, he's calling manhole six. Manhole six, that, please.
Okay.
And then as you were talking, that will bring that grinder?
We were, our plans call for grinders slash chopper pumps. Alan Luntchel requested that we use those, and he actually mentioned the manufacturer, flight if he wanted, and those are already on our plans.
So that'll be on site, right?
That'll be on site, operation, that station will be reinforced. The operation, that station will be responsibility of the property owner, not the city.
So we do have the letter with Ralph Swenson, the city engineer, his conclusions and recommendations, finding that the approach is satisfactory, will not significantly impact the sanitary system of the city of Kingston. This further is conclusion that the Lincoln Street Pump Station has ample capacity to accommodate the additional flow of the 8,170 gallons per day from the project. That's going to become part of the record.
I have a question, though. They've taken, I mean, this is any project, because they could take into consideration, like Mr. Riley, who spoke today about, sorry, I know they looked at the lines and everything, but has anybody spoken to the residents as far as, you know, Mr. Riley said he had a backup, like, you know, I just wanted to know, like, is that our problem, or is that something we should be concerned about? Is that if these residents are already currently having plumbing issues with what's there, and now we're adding something to the system? Even though the pipes are clear and they say they can handle it, but what are the resident, what's happening at the resident homes? There was a speaker, it's named Mr. Riley, who said that he has backup in his house right now, so now we're going to add this. And I understand they did all the studies and everything, lines are okay, but what is the impact? You know, do we have to be concerned with the impact to the current residents?
Well, and Mr. Riley's, and I hope I've got this correct, he was, he was under the assumption that the Almond House project was going to be tied into this six-inch main. Right now, we're agreeing to record Ralph's recommendation that, and they're going to go into, tie it to where the line is eight inch. So I think that was, I mean, I hope that answers your question about some of the neighbors' their concerns with that.
Oh, I understand your, I'm just saying, if we're going to add more to some complements already there, like I said, I know it's going to happen with any project, so it's nothing, but it's just, if there's, the area complements existed, should we look into that? I don't, I mean, I don't know. It's a question that I have for you. I mean, I live on this street, so will the problem come further down? No, I'm just.
The issue we have responsibility to, we have to address that. The issue for you this evening, the issue for you this evening is whether this project has an adverse impact on the sewer system. The sewer system is. And what we're hoping to ask, where you have identified concern, where my friend , Riley, lives, we're taking it to ask that issue of concern, whether it's his laval, which I've had problems with my laval in the city a couple of times, both in my business and my house. Sometimes it's the street, sometimes it's plumbing grease blocking the line, tree root blocking the laval on the line, but in this case, I mean, the line from, once you got to pass the Mead Street manhole to the next manhole down, it was in beautiful condition, flow is very low, no defects. And there were numerous defects, the next one off the six-inch line up, some pipe dips, a couple of pieces of broken plate, there were some laval intrusions. So it was right to buy that side. Rubco doesn't want to create a problem, anyone, with respect to the sewer. They could, they have vested rights to the Flatbush system because they're connected already, and that property's been connected for decades and decades and decades. And other people have been allowed to plug, connect that line in recent years. Major projects, they were going to re-ruin the sewer at significant additional expense of the project to get past, try to be, you know, work with the city to not exacerbate existing problems. Get to a section of sewer that's good, pump station that's underutilized, and I think it couldn't have gone any further.
Mike, can you take a look at some of our initial comments there? Do you want to go over the original comments that she had, Walden Mills, and answer some of the, answer the questions, and with your response, and also her rebuttal, if that's the case?
Well, certainly, from a standpoint of the submittal, you know, like I said at the last meeting, I have a problem with things being submitted at the close of a public hearing. Public hearing is open, for a certain period of time, it was extended, those times are over. So as far as I'm concerned, I object to anything being submitted at this date. But that being said, just to preserve the record, I can certainly address what we initially addressed in my May 5th responses. Do you want me to go through this?
Read it, lady, Chairman, or? This, this document, this, okay.
I mean, I think if we address, if we address the new questions, I think a lot of it are.
Well, with the old ones here, I mean, it's full, stopping short of reading word by word, if you could just go over whatever concerns were and what your answers to those were.
Well, I can read her question, so that is not framed improperly.
Okay.
The question, and these are word for word, when we did this submittal, we recounted word for word what was in our email.
And the document that Mr. Oriola was reading from that was available online, okay, on our website?
Question one, traffic flow states of reduction in traffic flow in and out of this site as opposed to prior use. Traffic flow has been stagnant, however, there will be an increase in traffic of what it is today compared to what the prior use was. We answered this by saying that, yes, there will be an increase in traffic over the use of a property as an abandoned building, if you will. However, an abandoned building is not a prior use, it's a building with no present use at all. The traffic report that was, extensive traffic report that was submitted by Bernard Arrioz shows that there's no deleterious traffic effects in any manner from the planned project, and that the attendant traffic will be far less than what was there when the health department was operating. Those figures were all illustrated by Bernard Arrioz and entered into the record many, many weeks ago. Question two, there appears to be a conflict of interest with the realtor and Rubco, as Mr. T Collins is associated with both entities. That is the question. Our answer is that the relationship of the broker to the real estate transaction isn't pertinent to Land Use and Zementing. Questions, which this board is concerned itself with, just isn't germane from a Land Use and Zementing's standpoint, who the broker was, what his role was in affecting the real estate transaction. That is a question that people want to ask, tell me, not for this, not for this, not for this board. The question three, the common council passed a sidewalk resolution to be compliant with ADA 2010. How does this plan to equate sidewalk construction as required for the entire site, surrounding avenues and streets that are currently without, not just the site? The answer that we came up with, we went onto the City of Kingston website, and we found that in March 13, 2017, a proposed sidewalk standard for the City of Kingston was proposed, introduced, it has not, from my knowledge, been adopted. But when you look at that document, which we have a copy of here, and I can enter it into the record, which I will, when you look at that document, it applies to existing sidewalks, it does not apply to new projects, not that I can see, only inasmuch as new projects are referred to in the guidelines. There's a section that says guideline, and I'm going to read the specific ADA 2010 reference. It says in the guidelines, quote, "In districts without sidewalks, shoulder area, meaning ADA 2010 slash ADAAG accessibility requirements can be created," end quote. The, I think it says, I think it says, it means, it can be, it can be offered or created, and this passage is meant to read as an offering of potential for shoulder area accessibility. We also checked with our consulting architect, and there is absolutely no problem with leaving an area in that lack, and we will, we do that on the plan. Our architect said, no problem at all. But there is nothing in that law that requires sidewalks to be installed, nothing inside of the law, nothing in those guidelines that require a sidewalk to be installed. Like you say, I could go, I stated a lot of legal, legal facts and citations, right for single position, but irrespective of what that, what the May, the March 17, 2017 introduction to the common council says, Rubco's under no obligation at law to improve areas off the site. That's the idea that the sidewalk have to be connected, or that somehow we have to contribute to connectivity of sidewalks off-site is not in support of the law. Question four, there is much medical waste and debris on the surface of the site currently. What is the current future environmental impact and the underlying unknown? We're unaware of any kind of medical regulated waste on the surface of the property. I'm sure that there's, like any property in the city, there may be some debris, and some of it may actually be medical in nature. I don't know, if we're talking about syringes, if we're talking about things like that, those can be found on many, many properties in the city, curiously. Our intention is to occupy a site that doesn't have any debris on it or anything that's on it at all. We, from my knowledge, that is not the current case on the site, not to any great extent, certainly, it may be the case of the property is occupied. The, the, like you say, the, I give some citations in here, too, that SEACR concerned itself with non-speculative environmental consequences. And if you're going to be against the project, or you're going to offer evidence of something, you really have to do something about offering the evidence, not just speculating as to what might possibly occur on the site. So all the lead agency is charged with is looking at the environmental impacts that can be reasonably anticipated from the project. So I guess I think that some of these things, like I said, are germane. But question five, the current city charter code specifically refers to ECO 360 institutional care residence, as proposed use of the site is not really fit into these definitions. We're not an institutional residence, and this definition is only applicable for building purposes, it's not applicable under the zoning code, which is what you're charged with enforcing, and what you're charged with, with actually administering around. The regulatory framework is just not within the purview of this, of this board. We are a multifamily senior facility, which is categorized under the Zementing. So they are categorized and will fit into that. Number six, there appears to be a discrepancy of the accurate acreage of the site, number of standing buildings that exist today, blasting water runoff, and what does the Zementing mean to part of this part today? I, I said, stated, and the answer is that there's no discrepancies in these areas. This is all articulated, a very, very detailed manual application, and the addendum, and there are studies that have been submitted, and there is, you know, a full stormwater study, there's a full traffic study, there's a full endangered threatened species study, there's a full archaeological study, there's numerous, a traffic study, numerous studies that have been submitted, their dependency or review, and this information is all there, painted, it's on the maps, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the project record. So I don't, I didn't see any need to go back through and redundantly set forth all that again. For instance, blasting, which has come up again in the newest set of questions, Scott Dunham and Dennis Arrioz entered into the record at the last meeting, very detailed description, that we do not plan to blast, that we don't want to excavate any rocks there without blasting activities, but that in the event that blasting occurred, or needed to occur, that all protocols for blasting will be followed. Blasting, as many of this board probably know, is a type two action under SEACR, it's exempt from SEACR review, it's not, it's a ministerial act. You get the permit, you put it in your application with the building department, you need all the conditions, and then you're issued the permit. If something goes wrong with blasting, the liability is strict, there isn't any kind of comparative negligence standard or anything else. If you mess up with blasting, you're liable. So that's one of the reasons why it's type two under SEACR. So, I mean, I can, I can address some of the other, if you want to.
Yeah, but let's continue there, and then I'd like to ask, maybe Joe, you just give a quick update on the change in the occupancy programming?
Again, the, you know, Mr. Collins' status, I don't think has any relevance to what this board is determining. The medical degree, I guess she, Councilwoman Mills has given, what she says in it, is example of waste over the back of the building. There's, in this picture, there looks to be a glass or a cup, and what looks to be like an old bottle, and in the bottom picture, it looks like there'd be some kind of medical, like a syringe or something like that. Like, say, I think on any, virtually any project, property in the city, there's going to be some degree or detritus floating around those areas. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, or all clean, any book, or anyone goes on site. The, you respond, you're right.
No further on that one. When you're done, Mike and Howard, you can address the subsequent questions.
And the next question, will there be water runoff that states that 100% of the site is well drained, as any study would see that, see how this will affect the neighboring homes, or KHA, or Wolf Tech? Like you said, Dennis is done, and he can speak to it a lot by overnight, and the whole hydro modeling and stormwater report.
We did it, it's a May 8th, reported, this reported for the property in February, and then in March, we drilled it down to a summary memo, I'm sorry, February as well, at the planning meeting, so it was just simple, if they, blow it down, we are collecting, right now, stormwater runs into a system, most of it, it dumps off the back of the hill, behind the, behind the main building of the property, and runs down into what's now Wolf Tech's property, flows into the ground, or into a drainage system that was put in by Holly Licker, and runs under the CSX tracks to across Olympia, now Harv Street, all the way to East Elm Street. What we're doing is collecting it and essentially putting it into the ground in the lower field by the new proposed senior building. We did test mows, this is all in the report, and also in the summary memo, that's in the record for the board. We're reducing the rate of runoff from the site significantly by about 90% over its current rates of runoff from the site, both the total volume runoff and peak rate runoff. And we're treating the stormwater from the new developed areas of the site in accordance with the DUC protocols, and what's going to be required by your city law. We're going to have to get Speedy's general men for construction activities, and we're going to have to, and we'll file the state design manual, the DUC treaty, and that's all in this report, which will become a SWIP. all in this report, which will become a SWIP, you know, as part of the final permitting for the project. And your city and the board also will have to sign off on SWIP. Mr. Swenson has reviewed the study and he had very minimal comments reflecting some minor changes on the plans, which will be in front of you when we get the site plan, final site plan approved hopefully. But again, it was a memo, it was in February, a memo specific to stormwater traffic. And then there was a supplemental, they added more detail with respect to what it's sort of at the March meeting. And I haven't seen anything to dispute the information with respect to the stormwater study. The report has a nice conclusion that it was.
The next, the next question was, it states there will not be any excavation with new construction including blasting. We've already addressed that. The next question was, can further information be supplied if there will be any encroachment of adjacent area? We're planning on staying wholly on our site. I do note that the endangered threatened species report that was done by Mike Nowicki states that we will not be removing trees. We're going to stay within the current footprint of the area that had been developed before or that was otherwise occupied by grass and maybe some shrubs around that area. We are not going into fully avoided areas with facilities. During construction, where will the stored material or machinery be stored? I think Dennis can probably speak to that the best.
That'll be largely, it's not completely in the existing parking lots and in the curb on the site around the main building, behind the main building and down where the senior building is going to be constructed on a curb, which is on a proposed, post senior building is on an existing parking lot margin, but there's other parking areas now at that part of the property. So it'll be, you have a small area on the phasing of the project, but it'll be on existing hard surfaces. Equipment and materials will be stored during construction.
The, the next question is, some seniors aged 55 and over are grandparents and have custody, custody of their grandchildren or babysit their grandchildren. Will children reside at the site and will in-house childcare exist?
No.
No, but my question was huge. It was just so that, I mean, we have just discussed before now, there's a response to some of the comments and have been received of a hearing and went through submissions. Just to explain how RUGO is addressing the change of the programming and the occupancy of the code?
Sure. So first of all, in answer to that specific comment by the old woman, it was always contemplated that these are, these are all senior one bedroom units and not anticipating families and therefore not anticipating children. You are correct though, that, that in response to some of the public comment, among the public comment was a concern that the mix of the populations, the age populations, might cause issues, might not be appropriate. I do want to say on the record that we don't believe that that conclusion is supported by, by data with respect to this project or in general. And in fact, we take the mixing of those, those age groups, those populations in something to be desire friendly in general. Having said that, the, the need to house the target population here of seniors in Kingston and in Ulster County is so extraordinary that we're perfectly happy to respond to that set of concerns by modifying the program so that the entire campus would be the 55 older campus. And so we submitted that on the record, that letter was also on your schedule. And we're happy to make that change. We hope that it alleviates some of the concerns perhaps of members of this board, but it was a comment from the public. And while we're not so sure about the, sort of the science that backs that up or the social good that may come of it, we think there's certainly enough need in the senior population here that it's a, that's a good change and we're happy to do so. Thanks for the opportunity.
The next question was, states that habitat assessment for endangered threatened species is provided there in dependency of SEACR review. Who determines this? This was asked for by the planning board, specifically by Sue Tanyel, and we did prepare that. We had Mike Nowicki from Ecological Solutions LLC prepare that report. Just so the board knows, Mr. Nowicki is on the D E C list of qualified consultants for endangered species. It's not easy list to get on. And he did, he did a report of, of the site. He specifically looked for the two endangered species, which are usually and customarily come up in our area, bat species, one is the Indiana bat, and the other one is the northern long-eared bat. And he did a study of both of those from the standpoint of potential for habitat for nesting. Since we're not removing any of the trees on the site, there was no effect by the development on those, any of those areas. That was his conclusion. As far as, the next question is, states an archaeological assessment to be performed. Who does this and has it been done? We hired Joseph Diamond, Ph.D. He's a Ph.D. over at SUNY New York. He's done many, many archaeological studies, many that I've been involved in just with him. He is also one of the foremost authorities on archaeological studies in the state. Many of the people that are at SHBO right now at the state office of historic, partial recreation, preservation were all, were, many of them were his students at SUNY New York. But anyway, Dr. Dunham did an archaeological study of the site. He took a look at specifically areas in which would be disturbed that were not in a pre disturbed, not pre disturbed site and determined that virtually all of the site had been previously disturbed. There was no potential for anything of archaeological significance. In addition, he went and identified exactly where the graveyard is that's on the site, which is located about 700 to 750 feet down the break into where we're building. And the, the, the New York State Cemetery law requires a 50-foot setback from any existing cemetery or well, well past 50 feet from the existing cemetery on the site. So that report was also submitted and confirmed by way of historic mapping, which Joe was able to come up with. The last question is, any sewer work that is required is at the cost of a code? I would say, I, I can't answer whether or not sewer work will be required in the future. And I certainly can't answer what the cost of that would be, but this is a municipal sewer system. There's no way it would be the city's responsibility to repair, replace any of the infrastructure.
Except with the caveat, anything with respect to the sewers on the site, the pump station, and the forest may be leading from the site to the point of connection on Clifton Avenue will be the responsibility of the property owner. And of course, there will be paying sewer needs to be in the city, which is the basis of all revenue that comes in to the maintenance of the sewer department and also paying the bond issues in the sewer, all throughout the city wide. Also, just to follow up on the stormwater question before, so I have a specific for you, but I'm going to hand you this table. It was in my memo February 27th. It might be lost in file paper, but it shows we're reducing our peak rate runoff from 8.5 CFS to 3.2 CFS for the 25-year storm. And our volume runoff from 1 acre feet to 2.37 acre feet of water for the 25-year storm. And I have all forest storm events there, but it's summarized. It's, you know, submitted to the planning board. And we're doing that, not only, we, we don't want to, you know, create impacts offsite, but you know, it's also required that we have no increase off the site and that we treat, collect and treat the stormwater now. If we're disturbing more than an acre, we're going to be disturbing a little bit more than an acre of the project, not a lot, but so we're subject to those regulations. And our, our report indicates we'll be compliant with those in the design. We'll have to go through again, go through a preliminary review by your engineers. We'll go through a final review and we'll have to sign off and submit a form, a statement saying you signed off
There's just, there's been so many questions that come up every time, come up very often. If I do have the door on.
For negative weight, for the non, you know, the non-communication.
Well, I mean.
Who's asking?
Such as, we got people on what is, what is, all of the backfall, now we're running stuff down a different way now. At the gap line, although sewer lines are best on from experience for that day, where is that going to be pushed down? We're going to have rocks through sewer lines from here all the way to the shore. I need to find out how low those lines are. I mean, it's just, I'm not prepared to report a different incident.
As far as the sewer goes, we've got a document from the city engineer, illustrated that this proposal will be able to handle the, handle the, these fluxes, these rocks. And we're not engineers ourselves. We've historically left it, you know, in the hands of professionals to, to help us with these questions, you know. I'm not saying we don't have valid questions, but we have something.
Maybe they should come in and sit down and talk and explain what we need to talk and ask them.
I think this is, the questions have all been asked, both in the course of time for this project.
So any point of clarification, the last paragraph here is the conclusion, so it's the determination of the whole regulatory scheme for us here. I understand that.
If we decide to go with.
Okay. That's, that's all, that's draft document.
Okay.
That is.
Okay, okay. My question was just that we got a notice, but this isn't an official document, you said, it was, you know, the determination of.
I think, yeah, it was, it was draft, the board's consideration.
But this isn't a binding thing.
It would be if you got.
Just let me say that all of the, just some of the issues that will, the documents that will be, become part of the official record is all of the old woman Mills's questions and Robco's responses. Also, the fact that there was an archaeological report conducted, the threatened and endangered species report, and also the May 5th letter from RUGO illustrating change of occupancy program to seniors.
Can I just ask now, where do we go from here?
Well, we may, tonight we're going to be asked to either approve, to have an issue with positive declarations or a negative declaration that just pertains to SEACR. It's not a site plan, okay? If we do issue, if we do find, issue a negative declaration on SEACR, the matter is referred to the county council for the proposed zoning change. They take up that matter then. If they happen to, if they happen to agree that there's a zoning change, we're allowed for this project, it would come back to us for a site plan and a site plan is started. So this is not saying that the project is approved. All we're dealing with tonight is whether we agree that under SEACR, project will not cause significant danger to the environment. That's all we're dealing with tonight.
What happens if we vote it as a positive?
A neg that would say we don't, there's, there's no significant issues. Positive that would mean that there are significant issues that have to be addressed. And after, you know, we did the part, we did the part two. Remember we had that line of questioning, was the last one they did that, the part two? Those issues that were raised with the applicants have all been addressed, okay? And we do have the report from the engineer and that was sitting, that would be the sewer line, you know? And again, we're not engineers. I do sympathize with folks living in the neighborhood over there, but if Rob is satisfied that this will be able to handle the flow.
If I may, I think, one of my concerns is that the issues that were raised as potentially being significant impacts have been addressed, as you refer to.
That's right.
And I, I don't know where, for instance, on SEACR, you know, your consultant has opined that the capacity is there over the pump station, that if we bypass that six-inch line, that, that's not an issue. And I guess the issue for, for me, I would respectfully ask, there's no, I can't think of what else we would do to try to satisfy that concern. So I don't know what we achieve, we, why not.
If. But before I do that, the spark of the super goes, I know Robert Jacobson was mentioning the last one, that, you know, maybe we should have a third party take a look at this. And I think that having, Arroyo do that TV in the line, in my eyes constitutes a third party on that to, to make that determination too. And so Sue just mentioned also, with the, the issue going to, potentially going to the county council for consideration, the zoning change, there will be a public hearing on that. And if it does come back to us for site plan consideration, there will be a public hearing on that as well. So this is, if we decide to go with a neg that, this is not the end of the line for, for the project. There's, there's other, other, other.
the project, there's, there's other, other, other steps that have to be taken for the project to become approved, if that's, if that's the way that this board wants to go, the common council, and it comes back to us for site plan, by all means, this is the end of the line, so.
I just wanted to speak to the sewer one more time. First problem, a lot of spots in the city, if you turn a project down because there might be a problem, low-reach Jester Street that has to get fixed in 10 years, I mean, we're doing what the city has us to do. We're spending $150,000 to $200,000 extra to address a concern the city had with respect to Flatbush Avenue sewer line that we're already connected to. We're running to a good section sewer, there's been TV, Plankton Street pump station is running less than 10% of capacity, probably closer to 5. It's got two 350-gallon pumps that run for a total, within eight days of course, maybe run for a total of an hour, an hour and a half a day. We were there for an hour in the morning, usually a high use period, we were at 9:00 in the morning, the pumps never even came on, they never even cycled. I think, you know, what else would you want the applicant to do or another property owner whose property to do, other than to reroute their flow at a significant expense away from a problem area that you've identified? Done what? You're a quite competent engineer, city engineer, you're superintendent of public work. We let it go on Towny Street, Towny's Jester Street, we had to replace a pump station on Jester Street, that's a small station, that didn't make much sense. We looked at Flatbush and Storridge, the city engineer said you'd rather not rely on that because that's an ongoing inspection and maintenance thing, making sure that evening discharge is going on, so, you know, he felt, and I think he's right, let's redirect their flow to a better part of the city. Is it perfect? We get down to Hasbrook Avenue, nothing's perfect in your system except for maybe the stuff that's brand new and that's true everywhere. This is not a big problem, this is five gallons a day, actually three to five gallons in an average flow over, over a day. In addition to what was there, it's really a small, small additional flow to the city. It's not a major, you know, secret, when you're talking about significant impact, you're talking about something that might be 10 times as large, might warrant a potential significant impact. Their threshold is the secret guidelines of what's a potential significant impact. This decision's small and we're going out of our way to bypass a problem that you've identified or concern the city's identified.
So they have any other questions? Who would be? Okay. Mr. Chairman, before the board vote, I'd like to get an idea where they, since we only have, apparently four people, they're going to vote.
We have five people voting.
Well, I thought, I thought Mr. Long was, was, no.
No, he's still, he's going to vote.
The only, the only, the only person that will announce all his names, Matt Phillips and Matt Hughes himself.
Yeah, so you have, how many?
So we have top, the side of the swing.
Yeah, Chuck, I say it wasn't, it wasn't his intention, not to vote. All right.
Like you said, I like to get a, where people are with this. Where we take...
We're going to find out, we're going to find out.
Can we poll the board? Just to chair, because I just, I don't want this to go into a realm of having absolutely no basis for required E I S.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this right now, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna poll before we vote, I'm just gonna go ahead, all right? So as far as secret goes, I'm going to make a motion that we, the lead agency, the city council, plane board, issue a negative declaration with respect to the Owens project. And the conclusion is based on the information currently available to the lead agency and the analysis and evaluation of all of the relevant and probable environmental impacts related to the activities and actions herein proposed. The city Kingston Plain Board as lead agency determines that there will be no significant adverse environmental impacts associated with this project and no environmental impact statement, E I S will be required for the action. Therefore, this determination of non-significance and negative declaration procedure is hereby approved, adopted and issued by the lead agency. So that is a motion. A yes vote will mean that you agree that there will be a negative declaration as far as secret goes, a no by, a no vote means that you feel there's a positive impact on the environment.
Wait, can I, just let me clarify, if, if there is, my understanding of it, I think Joe was two, I would ask Dan two, my understanding is that if, if this board does vote for the negative declaration, that does not mean that it will be an automatic positive declaration. Still, in my legal opinion, it would still be charged with asking the board members of what issues, significance have been raised and then being prepared to mitigate those issues. Again, I, again, I haven't heard any significant rating.
Okay, I'll answer, absolutely. All right, so, that is a motion that we issue a negative declaration on this. Do I have a second on that? Second, my very Joe Wilshere. I'm gonna go person by person here. Chuck, how are you voting? William Tavi? It's a yes. And I would be voting yes. Motion is carried through to two and so what that means is that we would be forwarding our...
Wait. We're going to ask at this big table, you need four votes to make any negative determination?
No, three, three is a, three is a majority of four.
Majority of...
Five of four.
Took five of us.
Yeah.
Seven, three or seven.
No.
Seven members here.
Who?
There are all...
Two, but you want, but you... No, you're all, you're seven, that's for us, so. You guys have more, more people at the meeting than boards that I've seen.
All right, so this tonight will be forwarded to the common council's laws and rules committee for them to take up the matter on the proposed zoning change. And so that is it for...
Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple of housekeeping matters. Do you, does this board want us to make the copies of the documents and like give them back so we can circle them? Do you want to do it here? Do you want to do it? And you'll do the E and B? Next, my next question is, two things, two 30-second memo referral to Dennis, so if the board sort of do that, that's the, I think, appropriate. And then the public hearing on especially use for the sites and then help you vote about scaring that now or what is that?
My, I'm going like this right now, so I think we should, yeah, let's hold off on